Mr. Butler's still trying to get on, he said, give him just, he just said, give him a couple of seconds. And if it doesn't work this time, we'll just have to put it off to next meeting.
This is Chairman, I'm all President accounted for.
All right.
Okay.
There he is.
Okay, Mr. Butler's not on the computer yet, he needs to be signed in. Eric, did you hear me?
Got my wife's name, but that's me. I'm on her computer.
Okay, all right, um, is everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go ahead then, and we'll call the meeting to order. Um, this time I'll call the role, Vice Chairman Taylor.
Here.
Councilman Flowers.
Yeah.
Councilman Wetzel.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Here, okay, and all right, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and ask, um, Councilman Taylor, if you would, give an implication, and we'll, I guess we'll stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll get started.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, our God, we do thank you for all of your manifold grace that you bestowed upon each of us, Lord, we realize we would not be here if it had not been for your grace and your mercy, you protected us, you brought us safely thus far, and we thank you for Collin County, South Carolina, we thank you for the United States of America, we thank you for all of our staff, Lord, all of the administration, those who work and serve, especially this council, your grace upon our life, that as we meet tonight, for the regular business of Collin County, that you would crown their heads with knowledge, with wisdom and understanding, that we be enlightened to the truth, that it be for the betterment of the people who live, work, play, and enjoy the benefits and the fruits of what goes on in Collin County. May you keep us all safe, Lord, we lift up all those families who are mourning, and, and we just thank you for your protection right now, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag
Flag.
of the United States
States of America.
And to the republic
Republic.
which it stands as one nation
Nation.
under God
In God
which stands liberty
One nation
for all.
And God under his liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman Taylor, I'd like to welcome everyone, I'm not sure who all's, what guests we have on, but, um, this is our regular scheduled meeting for the month of September, today is September the first, two thousand and twenty, Tuesday. At this time, we'll get started on our agenda. The first item we have is item four, approval of minutes from the regular meeting of August the fourth, two thousand and twenty.
Move the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilman Wetzel, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chair, who, who was the first? I know Mr. Wetzel was second.
Taylor. I think Councilman Taylor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, so the motion carries unanimously, uh, moves to item five, awards and recognition, we have none this evening. Um, item six, appearances and public presentations. Mr. Michael Butler, the Workforce Development Director, um, is here, he's the Workforce Regional Local Strategic Four-Year Plan Update, I guess he's gonna give us, Mr. Butler?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow council members, thanks for the opportunity, just to speak to you briefly, um, this evening, every four years, just kind of give you, I don't know, a, a quick history, every four years, the Department of Labor requires that each state produce a unified four-year strategic workforce plan, and also the local workforce areas in each state have to do the same thing. So we're doing it both as a local area and on a regional basis, of course, our regional partners is the Trident area, which is the Berkeley Dorchester and Charleston County, so we're, we're partnering with them on both the regional and local plans. And two thousand and sixteen, when I presented to the council, I was in charge of the regional plan this year, my counterpart in Charleston took over the regional plan, so a lot of the information came from her side. So, and, and real short, just want to kind of give you just a synopsis of what the regional and the local plan is covering. We have God and principles and priorities that our regional plan is covering, hope you had, hopefully you had an opportunity to look at it. If not, please feel free to, uh, to contact me at any time, and we can discuss it, and I can answer any detailed questions you have for it. Uh, number one is partnership and collaboration, you'll see a lot of, um, about that in our plan. Also, increased access to resources and services through the use of technology. Uh, the impact of COVID nineteen on the local areas workforce and strategies to facilitate rapid, um, employment. And lastly, innovation and cost efficiencies. Now, the plan already has five sections that we are to each area is to address. Um, the first, uh, section is workforce and economic analysis. Uh, the second being strategic vision and goals. The third being local area partnerships and investment strategies. Uh, fourth is program design and evaluation, and fifth is compliance, so it's a very detailed plan, we're proud of it, it's a collaboration between workforce education, local economic development partners throughout the SC work system that all had various input into, uh, both the regional and local plans. And as promised, that is the end of my presentation, short and sweet. If there's any questions that you have, I'd be more than happy to answer them, if not, you can always just call me, I'm off record and we can talk.
Anybody got questions for Mr. Butler? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Butler, I appreciate you being here, and thank you, uh, for, uh, your presentation and for the work that y'all are doing on this plan.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we also have appearance this evening, um, from Mr. Larry Lightsey, regarding the two thousand and twenty census update, Mr. Lightsey, are you on?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I hear you, I don't see you, but I hear you.
Okay, can you see me now?
Now I see you.
Okay, great, thank you, Chairman. Uh, good, I want to say good evening to the honorable members of the, uh, Collin County Council, um, Larry Lightsey, I'm here this evening to give you an update of the two thousand and twenty census. Um, as you can recall, partnerships were formed, uh, to do, uh, outreach for the two thousand and twenty census, so that we can reach some of those, uh, hard-to-reach areas. Um, a very robust operation, uh, strategy was put together by the committee to go out and conduct these outreach, um, efforts, uh, we were gonna use community events such as the Rice Festival, um, uh, reach out to the houses of worship and other avenues to try to promote the census this year. Um, April first was the official kickoff event, and we were gonna host that, Collin County Farmers Market and Museum, uh, a few weeks prior to that, that's when, uh, COVID nineteen came upon this county and, uh, restrictions were put in place. So with that being said, our window of opportunity, uh, got smaller because a lot of these events had to be canceled. So at that point, we had to transition into a mode of operation which included, uh, social media advertisements, uh, we used the, uh, Collitonian, former Collitonian newspaper, and also the Press and Standard. Uh, with that being said, we, uh, do feel that, um, COVID nineteen did suppress, uh, de- de- debilitate, uh, some of our operations. Nevertheless, um, I'm gonna bring up share screen here with you to give you our current results. Bear with me. Okay, can you see that shared screen?
Yes, we can see it. Well, it did.
Y'all, Larry's having, um, technical difficulty, technical difficulties, he'll let us know when he's back.
Okay.
All right. Eric, can we, uh, just, uh, move item B of appearances and presentations until such time as he can come back to us later in the meeting?
Yeah, we'll, we'll move on to, uh, the next item, administrative briefing. Mr. Griffin.
Mr. Griffin, you're not coming through, you're not
Coming down.
Now you're there.
Here we go, Mr. Chairman of Council, good evening, uh, um, first of all, I like, Larry's put in a lot of hard work with the census and a very, uh, tough time to try to implement such a plan, but I, hopefully he'll get back on and be able to share some more information with us, but I, I do want to point out, um, as the cog keeps, uh, they're staying on top of it, really helping us, we're coming up with a number of different programs, just last week, we, to everyone in the summer feeding program, we sent out flyers with them to try to make contact, one of the areas that we're having the hardest time in is the lower part of the county. Um, and, uh, to try to get contact down there, there are a number of other things that are coming up here, uh, through the, uh, the month of September that we're gonna be really hitting, uh, hard, and I'm sure he'll, he'll, uh, come back and expand on that as well. Um, I'm also gonna tell you in a minute about an effort at SEAC with a number of the organizations we just found out about yesterday, we'll be doing at the end of September. But, uh, Larry, although the numbers are down from where we were this time last year, he's actually leading our region, um, far and away, leading our region, uh, Collin County is in comparison to Hampton, to Jasper, and Beaufort, as far as our census response numbers, and we actually, for the first time, went blue last week, uh, on our census map, uh, Larry is back with us, Larry, do you want to continue?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna share this information that I pulled earlier.
Okay.
Okay, just to give you an update of where we are at, um, South Carolina currently, uh, has a self-response rate of seventy-four point one, uh, Collin County right now, and we at fifty-one point two. Um, that's the county as a whole, and like, uh, Mr. Griffin just mentioned, last week, we did, uh, move up to, from a shade of brown to blue, so that puts us over fifty-one percent, which was a goal of ours. Um, with the other municipalities, they also share a piece of the pie, so to speak, and this just gives you an idea where all the other municipalities, which, uh, the city of Waltsburg, Cottageville, Eddie Still Beach, Large Smokes, and Williams, you see that, those numbers before you right there. Um, and this is the, uh, map which gives you a pictorial of where we at, um, like we mentioned earlier, we did, uh, transition to a color blue last week, which was a plus. As far as the region is concerned, um, Collin County, we're currently at, uh, fifty-one point two, followed by Beaufort, Jasper, and Hampton, just to give you an idea where we at with the region. You know, so we want to encourage, um, our citizens, if you have not, uh, completed your census yet, it's still not too late, you can visit, uh, two thousand and twenty census dot gov, and, um, the survey is actually less than ten minutes, and this will help your community. And that will conclude my presentation, sorry for the technical difficulties, um, I'm gonna ask council, do you have any questions for me?
Um, Mr. Lightsey, is there, I know everybody across the country must be having the same problem with COVID. Has the Census Bureau, have they addressed or made any recommendation as far as extending the census period or the period, I guess, to collect the census data, or is that something that they have not discussed?
Yes, sir, um, that was discussed, uh, coming from the executive, uh, portion of the census. However, uh, the census, uh, counting originally was gonna end at the end of October, but that date has been changed to at the end of this month, which, which is the end of September. Um, which, uh, those decisions are, uh, be- beyond the local level, so, um, hopefully, we will be able to conduct additional outreach to be able to increase our numbers.
Okay. Anybody have questions?
This is Chairman. Or could I ask Mr. Lightsey, uh, this is Art Williams, uh, what causes us to be thirty points behind the national average and approximately twenty-three points behind and the, uh, this, the state average? Or, because we're all going through the same, uh, basic, uh, everyday trials with COVID nineteen, so what, what can you, uh, say that may be one of the issues that we're having that causes us to be so far behind? I know that we are saying that, uh, that we are above the average for all, but I'm not concerned with the region with those low numbers, if the region had high numbers, then I'd be glad that we're leading the pack, but if we are below par and, uh, and just concerned with the region, then that's not gonna get it for our future in the next ten years of funding.
Right, and you are correct, Councilman, uh, one thing, uh, as far as my opinion, um, we do have to research and go back into the historical uh, part of this, because the two thousand and ten census, uh, our numbers were also low. Um, actually, when I first began this project, uh, it was predicted that there would be a, possibly, possibly a low turnout for, uh, Collin County, so with, with that question, I, we do have to go back and research the historical reason why Collin County, uh, does score, uh, have a low response, uh, when it comes to the census. Now, one thing I wanted to, um, share with you, uh, this is not the end of the census count with the self-response, we do have census takers that have been deployed into the community within the last few weeks. Uh, so, they will visit those households that did not respond. So hopefully with that effort, uh, we will increase those numbers.
Okay, is there any other questions for Mr. Lightsey? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Lightsey, I appreciate you being here, thank you for your, uh, your presentation, and hopefully I'd keep up the good work, maybe we'll get everybody counted here soon.
Good, thank you, Chairman.
Okay, we'll, um, go back then to the, uh, to the agenda. Um, well, Mr. Griffin, did you finish your briefing, I think we were kind of in the middle of your briefing. You're on mute again.
I would, I do want to point out, I was trying to get back over while, uh, Larry had that, if you look at that statewide map, we were discussing the very same thing as to why we're so much lower as far as the census counts, but if you look at that statewide map, uh, it runs almost to the number of the rural counties or the ones that are undercounted, and the urban areas, uh, or the ones with the higher count rates, and I, I don't know if you attribute that to better communication in those urban areas or, uh, a higher access to broadband and, uh, internet and those type things. So there's a number of other different factors, because I, I promise you, we are, we have pushed out there and done probably go, I could promise you go far and above what was done here in two thousand and ten to try to move these things forward, and hopefully these efforts we can do here in the next month. Um, we, we can really kind of push that over, at least get it up to sixty, sixty-five percent, I'm hoping. So, uh, that's one trend that, that oddly, the rural areas are, are not being counted as well as the, um, as the more urban areas. Um, to continue my report, I did want to go over, we sent out, um, I believe, August twenty-first, uh, a packet of budget information, as you know, uh, we are currently operating under a continuing resolution, two thousand and twenty-one budget year. Uh, Controller General Eric, excuse me, Richard Ekstrom, uh, just closed the books on the, uh, two thousand and twenty budget year for the state. Uh, I said, South Carolina is ended with a seven hundred and seventy-five million dollar surplus. Uh, hopefully, some of that maybe can come back down to the counties, uh, both this House and the Senate plan a special session starting September fif- fifteenth to finish the budget. Um, as you know, with the information we sent out right now, we're looking at a roughly one million dollar shortfall for the twenty, uh, two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, uh, budget year, uh, but things are still relatively fluid with that, uh, since we sent out the latest budget information to County Council. Uh, we've had some positive revenue news with a couple of grants we're working on to two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, hopefully, these will help soften the blow, uh, we did rece- we are set to receive a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in COVID nineteen reimbursements that was not budgeted in the information that we, uh, sent out to you, uh, that we just found out about here last week. Uh, we also have a disaster relief application in regards to tornado. Um, that's looking really good enough, that's approved, that would also put about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars into the budget, so those are two one-time revenues that would, would help us out in the upcoming year of around a half a million dollars. Um, as far as the state budget, uh, approval goes outstanding in the state budget, uh, is roughly a two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar uh, expenditure and one percent retirement employer match, uh, this two, two twenty-nine was, uh, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand was postponed in the gen- the General Assembly's continuing resolution, they did to move their budget session to September to try to wait and see what revenues do. Um, hopefully, that will be postponed throughout the year, that would certainly be a help, right now, that's the budget and expenditure for us. Uh, we're also got our fingers crossed FY nineteen and twenty, um, non-state participating employers were, excuse me, provided a one percent credit. Uh, we're hoping for those to continue, if for some reason they wo- weren't, uh, you're looking at another ru- roughly a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in expenditures. Um, uh, we also don't know right now if the, uh, one percent health insurance increase will be mandated, that's another fifty-two thousand. Uh, we budgeted based on current coverage, uh, elections, uh, so with the state budget right now, we're looking at roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenditures still hanging in the balance for the county. Um, there's also some possibility of some COVID relief being added, um, in the state budget for local governments, or an increase to the local government fund to help offset these expenses. A lot of things are being talked about, obviously, nothing's in stone, um, as far as that, so in discussing it with the chairman, we felt it would be bu- best to wait till the General, General Assembly finishes their budget work before we schedule a budget meeting to try to, uh, finalize and put some plans together on getting this budget passed for this year. Um, this means we'll likely be having a budget meeting sometime the third or fourth week in September, uh, to try and finalize our budget at the, uh, October meeting. Uh, moving on to a couple of project updates, I did want to go through with you, uh, these are CDBG project updates, the Gaston Loop Neighborhood, uh, program that's been going on since two thousand and sixteen now, um, we've cleared environmental review, all the exterior rehab has been done, uh, asbestos testing, all the demos being done, they finished the streetlights. Uh, we're working on the very final phase, which is the acquisition of the sidewalk easements, we now, which is taking some time. Um, we've now got four of those signed up out of nine, uh, we got one donated and, uh, one condemnation in progress. Uh, we're hoping to have all those put together here in the next month and a half, and, uh, get this project closed by the end of the month, end of the year. Uh, we need to get it closed because we cannot open another CDBG, um, round until such time as that one is closed. Um, the stadium demo, um, project, uh, the demo has been completed. Um, the, the project is now working on some, um, regressing of the area, there's some grubbing that still needs to be done around the perimeter, and, uh, that's, that process is underway as well as a bid is out now for, uh, perimeter fencing to be installed in and around the property, as well as some lighting, uh, to be added there. Uh, that project should close on time by the end of the year. Um, also, another outstanding project is the East Side, uh, Water Project, uh, that goes hand in hand with what's happening with Gaston Loop and some other areas, uh, at around H and D in that area that had some poor water issues. Uh, that one is moving forward rapidly, and it's just scheduled to close ahead of schedule, uh, which was June two thousand and twenty-one. And, um, let's see, we are still have an outstanding application on the Buck- Butler Building, uh, as well, uh, we do hope to hear from that here in the next uh, two to three weeks, so hopefully by the next meeting at least, um, I'll have some info on that one for you. Uh, also, um, a couple of other aside projects we have, we're going ahead and done asbestos testing on the Butler Building, working on that now, we've also are, have the asbestos testing for the Avinia Brown School, um, to be demolished there, that'll be the, the, uh, site for the new Green Co- Green Pond Community Center. Uh, we'll have that moving here in the next, uh, sixty days as well, uh, at least out in the bid. Um, that, there was one, uh, skipping back to the census, uh, we got some conversations back and forth with SEAC. Uh, finally got some stuff finalized here, we understand yesterday, uh, but SEAC is helping lead an effort called SC Counts. Um, this is a statewide day of action, is a collaborative, uh, effort, SC Counts two thousand and twenty, the United Way of South Carolina, South Carolina Winter Women in Leadership, SCD Heck, South Carolina Association of Counties, and the Municipal Association of South Carolina, and a number of other organizations are putting together a statewide civic day of engagement, uh, this will take place on Sep- Saturday, September twenty-sixth, uh, from nine AM to four PM. Uh, the objective of, of this event is to offer a one-stop shop for residents to complete census forms, to have access to COVID nineteen testing, pre-flu shots, and to complete any fr- to, uh, complete voter regitate, voter registration and absentee voter registration, uh, forms, we have, um, We have um, Larry is going to be leading this effort along with uh, David Green um, and Angela over voter registration. We actually have a meeting on that in the morning and uh, we'll have some more information back out to you on the uh, exact location in the later in the week. Um, other than that, that's all I have for you, uh, right now as Chairman and Council.
Anybody, any members of council have any questions for the administrator?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just maybe one question. Um, Mr. Griffin, you talked about the uh, COVID funding that came down. Is that the federal COVID dollars that came down? Did we get any of that money for, for counties like ours?
Well, there's, this is the CARES Act funding. This is reimbursement for the direct COVID expenses like PP and E. Um, over time, you know, those type things is what this funding's for.
Right, and that was the funding we were left out of in the original funding that.
That's correct. The original round only included local government funding for jurisdictions of half a million or more in population. So the rural areas were left out of that original round. There is some talk on this, in the second round of hopefully uh, getting some help back down to the rural rural governments as well, but no, that, there was none of that in, included in the first bill. What it does is, what we're doing now is direct impacts uh, that we've had from COVID on our uh, fire rescue, um, first responders, those type things. As well as any other resources we've had to buy or reimburse as far as that's concerned.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
So Chairman, I have a que- I have a question for the, for uh, the administrator.
Okay.
Uh, Kevin, on uh, I, I noticed you spoke about the uh, project at the old uh, football stadium.
Right.
Is the fence and lighting a part of the grant?
Uh, yes, it will be paid for as part of the grant.
Okay.
Yeah, as part of the grant application.
And, okay, okay, alright. Thank you.
Alright, hearing no other questions, uh, we'll move on the agenda to item eight, old business. We have none this evening. Um, brings us to item nine, new business. Um, we have emergency ordinance twenty-dash-oh-dash-zero-seven. Emergency ordinance requiring that face coverings or masks be worn in public in the city of Walterboro and the unincorporated areas of Collin County during the COVID-nineteen public health and emergency recovery.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Wetzel and a second by, was that Councilman Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Discussion, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Okay, uh, first of all, I do support the covering, so that's not the, that's not the issue. But when I go throughout the day, when I'm out there in stores, many of the merchants are not wearing masks or some of the people that are going in. And uh, if we're gonna have a, a, an ordinance in place, what are we gonna do about, and I know we can't enforce one hundred percent, but we should strive for that. What are we gonna do with some of these uh, uh, vendors that just determined that the employees are not gonna wear masks? So therefore, when an individual come in and they're breathing all over you because they're not wearing a mask, they can't, they uh, they, 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 the business folks can't say anything because they are not wearing a mask. So do we have any uh, ways of at least trying to enforce an ordinance that we have in place?
Um, well, of course, the ordinance itself spells out what the penalties would be and of course how it's enforced. But I would agree with you that it's a uh, it's, it's an onus task trying to enforce that. I, I don't, I don't have the solution for it, but I've witnessed the same thing you're talking about. And um, I, is anybody else want to speak to that? How we could go about maybe trying to enforce that? Because I, I have also seen the same thing. Counsel.
I can chime in a little bit if anyone wants to hear it.
Oh, is that Sheriff?
Yes, sir, that's the sheriff.
I didn't know you were even on the call, but thank you.
I was being a little incognito. Uh, you know, we, we've been approaching these as we get complaints and then the county, we have not gotten the kind of complaints, obviously, that the city does, and I don't want to speak for Chief Marv. You know, we, we've tried to approach this from an educational standpoint in terms of educating people and telling them, you know, what the penalties are. And then we're seeing in the cases where we do that, generally speaking, we're getting compliance. Um, we are having some issues with uh, specifically some bars and stuff in the areas. And we've, we've reached out to our state partners as far as enforcing those. But until we get the call or until we get the report, we can't decide what our course of action is. So initially, what I would say is if you're seeing something that's concerning you, then call us and let us know about it.
Okay, any, any other comments? I, I know you mentioned specifically bars, of course. One of the exceptions in the ordinance, of course, is eating and drinking. I don't know how, I guess that's difficult in a bar, because I mean, you're not eating and drinking all the time or at least you shouldn't be, but um, it's, I don't know. I, I, I really don't know. I mean, it's a difficult thing to enforce. Anybody else had any comments?
Chairman, I think it's an unen- unenforceable law. I think we need to educate people about the dangers of it, of uh, the COVID virus. Uh, but I don't know how you can make people be compliant with something uh, that would help their own health. Uh, this, we have this with other things too, people won't take the flu shots. And uh, so I think it's an individual responsibility that people aren't taking seriously, unfortunately.
Anybody else got any comments before we move on? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Williams, was that a, in opposition or in favor?
No, no. I did not, I did not oppose.
Okay, alright, so that motion then unanimously. Uh, brings us to item B, first reading of ordinance twenty-dash-oh-dash-zero-eight to approve designation of the Collin County Planning Commission as the official planning commission for the town of Lodge.
Second.
Alright, we had a mo- who made the motion? Dr. Flowers?
Not the Joe.
And we had a motion by Dr. Flowers, second by Councilman Wetzel, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Item C, Resolution twenty-dash-R dash thirty-five to award contract for debris monitoring and recovery services. So move.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilman Taylor, second by Councilman Wetzel, any discussion?
Discussion.
Mm-hmm, Councilman Williams?
Mr. Chairman. I support the process, but my question is, are the evaluation criteria that is being used F, and I see where a veteran company gets additional points. What happens if, if I'm a newly formed company? I have some great employees, but then I bid on a project and uh, and the evaluation criteria is subjective. How will that help me as a young business person to, to uh, to compete fairly?
I guess the best answer I could give for that, and I'll ask Count, Mr. Griffin if he'd like to comment. But I mean, I would think experience is just one of the criteria. Um, if, if a new company exceeds in the other areas, I assume they could still potentially win the bid. Um, Mr. Griffin, you got any comments you want to add to that?
I, I will, I was gonna defer to Carla to see if you had anything to add as far as that, the criteria goes and how you, you all handle that process.
Just call on?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Um, so we have that in there just to ensure that we have someone that has knowledge of the process and especially FEMA, especially when it comes to the reimbursement side of it. We have to make sure um, that they're knowledgeable and know the process. So a new startup company could potentially um, you know, be successful if they can show that they've worked with other companies in order to get that knowledge. Um, but we do, we just have to make sure just from the FEMA side of things and to ensure our reimbursement that we have a company that's um, very knowledgeable of the rules and regulations. And with disasters like a disaster that we would have here. So we make sure that they can handle um, hurricanes and, and tornadoes and whatever disaster that we may experience here, that they're capable of that. So to the scale that we would need, um, and it's not just a super small company that has only done maybe one little disaster, um, we make sure that they can cover all of our needs.
Carl, I want to ask a question, um, maybe more basic than that. Maybe I should understand, and maybe I'm just having a bad night, but the, we've got, I know we have these three resolutions for, we have debris monitoring and recovery and we have debris removal and disposal, and obviously I'm pretty clear on that. And we got debris management and recovery. Can you kind of just tell me what each one of these providers are actually doing so that we I got, maybe I'm the only one, but at least for me, explain exactly what's going on so I got a better understanding?
Yes, definitely. Um, so we have the first push um, contract which um, is the debris removal and disposal services that was CC twenty-nine. So this is the contractor that's gonna come in within the first seventy-two hours after the storm event to come in immediately, be here and help us clear roadways, repair washouts, um, drainage issues and that sort of thing. So that's the first push, that's within the first seventy-two hours.
Okay.
And then we have um, the debris management and disaster recovery services. That is our um, large-scale debris contractor. So he um, comes in after the seventy-two hours. Once folks, um, the residents have had a chance to stack things on the curb. He comes in with the really big trucks, picks up everything off the curb, creates the debris site where he um, will mulch it or burn it or um, do the disposal part of it. So he's the, the much larger contractor that comes in and he's here sometimes for several months picking up the resident debris from the right-of-way. And whether that debris is vegetative or um, C and D or white goods, whatever we need. That um, also has that disaster recovery element in there. So if we need special services such as um, like generators or um, vessels removed from waterways and things like that, they can cover all of that stuff. They're a very large national company that has a lot of resources that can bring to us. Um, and then the other one, the one that we're talking about right now is um, CC twenty-eight, that's the debris monitoring. So everything that we touch has to be monitored by a FEMA con- you know, the FEMA um, requires us to monitor everything that the contractors are doing and then report in on that just to ensure that we're doing everything properly. So we have all the documentation, we have to take photographs, get GPS locations, um, ensure the amount of debris, we have to measure that. So the monitors measure the amount of debris in the trucks and make sure that it's disposed of properly. And that's just a FEMA requirement that we have the monitoring.
Okay, and these are the guys, would they monitor it? I guess we, we get reimbursed based on that. I mean, they have to track that, so we'll reimburse, get reimbursed proper amount, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. They review, um, they're with the contractor every day and then also they review the invoices provided by the contractor and sign off on those also.
Okay, I got you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think my question may be out of this particular piece right here, but we're talking about it. So as they're doing the monitoring, uh, like we had this last tornado event and some other things like that, have you seen some inflated pricing uh, on, on things that are coming in through this last series of of events where we had to have debris removed? And then at any time, the other part of the question, uh, in the monitoring, do they see where any subcontractors are being used to do this work? Uh, in their monitoring? So I'll just remove that and I don't know if my question really makes sense for.
As far as cost, I looked at um, the pricing received for all three of these and compared them to our three current contracts. And some of those are relatively older now, um, like the one for Ash Brett, that's our large-scale debris contractor. His numbers were actually the same or very, very close as they were five years ago when we did that one. And the same is true for the monitoring, they're very, very close numbers. Um, and with the first push contractor, so our numbers are staying the same. And if they went up, they only went up like five dollars or something like that. So no significant increases at all in the cost. Um, as far as the monitoring goes, that company typically hires local and trains local folks to um, assist them with the monitoring. So yes, there is um, some subcontracting when it comes to monitoring itself. They'll typically hire a local person. Um, now, we do look at that, local contracting in all of them to make sure that they can meet our needs. So the large-scale debris contractor, he does have contacts here locally um, that he can use as well as um, national con- you know, contractors that he can bring in from outside. So for instance, whenever we just had the tornado, he hired someone from Somerville to do all the grinding to reduce the debris at the landfill. So even though they are out of Florida, he still hired someone here local to complete that work. And then, of course, the first push contractor, they are local here to Collin County. Um, and so that they can be here as soon as the event's over.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Carl. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion then carries unanimously. That'll bring us to item D, Resolution twenty-dash-R dash thirty-six to award the contract for emergency debris removal and disposal services. So don't move. We got a motion by.
Second.
Do we have a second?
I need a motion.
Okay, we got a second by Councilman Flowers. I think I'm getting a little feedback for some reason on my end, but um, anyway, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, brings us to item E, Resolution twenty-dash-R dash thirty-seven to award the contract for debris management and disaster recovery services. So move.
So move.
Second.
Alright, got a motion uh, by Councilman Flowers, I think it was second by Councilman Wetzel. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously, brings us to item F, Resolution to appoint members to board vacancies. We have one, um, two vacancies on the Board of Disabilities with two applicants, Mr. James M. Button Jr. and Jasmine Douglas. We have one vacancy on the Planning, Collin County Planning Commission. We have an applicant, Mr. Adam Bishop. We have one vacancy on the Edisto River Canoe and Kayak Trail Committee. We have one applicant, Mr. John Burrows. Um, is there a motion that we set the, or make the appointment by acclamation? So move.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion uh, by Councilman Taylor and the second, I guess, Art, did you second that? Or you were in second?
Now, I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion?
Art made the motion. Given the motion.
Alright, Mr. Wetzel, did you second it?
I did.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, signify by saying aye.
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 And that motion uh, carries unanimously. That'll bring us to item G, this was the uh, Add-On Resolution twenty-dash-R dash thirty-nine to approve a master services agreement between Collin County and Smart Communications Holding Incorporated. So move.
So move.
Second.
Alright, got a motion by Councilman Taylor, second by Councilman Wetzel, is there any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I saw the range of functions, uh, Sheriff. But I saw the range of, of functions uh, in terms of kiosk and other communications up there. Uh, how do they compare to other services you've had in the past? Are you, they got any distinct difference?
Yeah, there are a few, and I also have Captain Shane Roberts here in case uh, we get into something technical I don't quite have. But essentially Lattice, who runs our system now, they're kind of more of a overseas player at this point. We're sort of a small fish in their pond. Um, Smart has actually purchased a lot of their, their holdings over here stateside. Um, and they're offering us a better product that uses the existing infrastructure. So in other words, they don't have to come. Um, and they're offering us a better product that uses the existing infrastructure. So in other words, they don't have to come in and make any real modifications other than taking the old phone system out and replacing them with some tablet systems. They're cutting us in for a better share of the revenue on the phone usage and video conferencing and we anticipate, because the, the billing that Lattice had was a bit arcane, um, that we'll see more of that. Now, that's not gonna be going directly to county revenues, obviously, it's gonna be going into the inmate fund. Um, inmate fund is one that we use specifically for the well-being of inmates. We purchase clothing, we purchase mattresses, bedding. Uh, we can also do things like security upgrades, which our aging facility is certainly in need of. Um, but this was a relatively easy decision to make. It's not gonna cost us anything out of pocket to do it. It's gonna offer us more services, uh, some things that will increase our investigative capabilities. And I think it'll increase our security as well. It comes along with a mail guard system that that cuts down on our in-house sorting of mail and so forth, and will hopefully cut down on some contraband being introduced in our facility as well. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, hearing none opposed, the motion then carries unanimously. Um, that brings us to item ten, council time. Is there any members of county council who have any, anything they'd like to bring before council?
Mr. Chair, uh, Councilman Taylor. I, I just want to do, um, you know, just recognize a solemn moment for Mabel Hendricks, who was a a member of our Sheriff's Department as a victim's advocate for a number of years here, and she, she passed in recent weeks. And what a beautiful celebration of life ceremony she had, but she worked here in the county. And she, uh, she was working in another county at the time, I think Dorchester County, but, but certainly she's remembered here uh, for, for her service in this county. I just wanted to recognize Mabel Hendricks.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. Any other, uh?
I have some.
Mr. Williams?
I have something, Mr. Chair. Uh, first I want to say thanks to, uh, the administrator and John Stiglich and, uh, Bill Washington and his roads and bridges crew. They did an excellent job of removing the debris from around the Old Avina Brown School. So we, the community certainly does appreciate that. And there's a couple of things that I would, uh, like to request, uh, since we're not making any progress on, on the meeting that are, that we had requested. And I understand that the pandemic is a part of it that slowed down the initial process, but still the, the, uh, the government work must go on. Uh, I would like to request a list of all active uh, contracts that have more than one year remaining, any contract that the county is involved in that have more than one year remaining. And, uh, with the, uh, and I would also like to ask for a weekly report so we can stay abreast with some of the things that are actually happening. And I know, uh, there are times when we do get a screen line, but we, we do have enough people on staff that we certainly can, uh, should be able to get a report, uh, weekly, uh, uh, to keep us abreast of what's happened that week, of what is intended to go on, uh, the, the weekend ahead. So until we can have ticklers, then I'd like to see if, if those things could be done.
Okay, and so to make sure I'm clear, you're, you're talking about weekly report as it relates to progress on the budget?
No, I'm talking about things that goes on in the county. Or, you know, or a report that keep us the same way the, we expect the South Carolina Association of Counties to give us a weekly report to keep us abreast of some of the things that are taking place on the state level or, or through with them, then I think that I don't want to keep relying on the uh, pressing standard, not that I have anything against them, but I don't want to rely on them for information that I receive. And, you know, we, there are some procedures, at some point, we need to, to have some guidelines or something. This is twenty months since I've been on council and we haven't had a sit-down discussion amounts, the council members, you know, or, and I, and I don't have any anything negative towards the administrator, because I think he's doing a fine job. But it's just that the process is what I'm concerned about. Because, uh, case in point would be the bids and proposals that are actually going out. Well, yeah, he's hired to make sure those things are done, but who are prioritizing what project is next in the pipe? I didn't see any documentation that tells me that we got project X is on the uh, ESOL that's gonna be done next. There's no timeline that is set up. And I, I would like personally to be more involved in selecting some of the, the projects that are deemed necessary in the next process, not put it all on the administrator's back, although he's capable of handling it, but I still want to do my share.
Okay, uh, Mr. Griffin, you, uh, I don't see him on my screen. You still there?
I'm right here. I apologize, I had it on full screen, so. Uh, that's not a problem. We can, uh, Councilman Williams, I'll, I'll probably contact you individually to see exactly what you're looking for in a weekly report. Um, and, uh, we'll, we'll figure out how that can function. If that's okay with you.
Well, that's, that's fine. I mean, yeah, we, we can have a one-on-one if I was interested. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I, you know, I don't want it to get so detailed to the level that you're spending most of your week just trying to come up with the report and not actually doing the, the ju- the work of the county, but, um, but at the same time, obviously, we're in some, you know, austere times here with the pandemic and having the report would be helpful too, but if it's just something in some sort of summary form, I don't have a problem with that. Anybody got any other things to bring before council?
I mean, Mr. Chairman, just, just in line with it, um, and in terms of that, um, I had had a conversation with Sheriff Gett, and I hope he doesn't mind me mentioning this, um. But you know, in terms of us and our responsibility for, for public safety and, and the health and wellness of people in the county, um, you know, I feel like, and I talked to him about it, uh, maybe we could see, you know, maybe a quarterly report or something from the sheriff's office too. Um, we kind of get a, a handle on things going on in the county. We don't have to get everything from, you know, the social media networks and we're getting hit blindsided. And there may be things they can apprise us of without interfering with their investigations and tell them, I just want to see them a little bit, hear a little bit more from them besides the contract or a, a budget issue. You know, maybe we could hear a little bit more from law enforcement.
I think we could, we could certainly update you on some crime trends and some things that we're seeing as they come up. Um, and, and again, I, I think we all kind of expected this year to be one where we, we had a lot more interaction, a lot more chances to sit down, but, but I'm certainly willing to work around that and and see what we can do to get y'all some more information about what we're seeing out there, just for, for your awareness, for your constituents and so forth. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, anybody, anybody else got anything? Um, I did just want to point out that on, on the, I know we're scheduling this budget meeting, just in case anybody's wondering, we, we still are, our continuing resolution runs through October, so we are operating on a, on a budget. It's just, it's a continuing resolution, uh, which unfortunately may end up being our budget. The rate things are going, but, um, I just wanted to point that out. If there's no other, uh, comments, is there a, we have no executive session, um, item, so is there a motion that we adjourn?
Move.
Motion that we adjourn, Mr. Chair.
We got a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we will stand adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Aye.